Okay, everyone, I think we took our five minutes. So, we are on to agenda, item number 10, which actually is item number 10 through 51.
Seven, seven, we're on the seven.
Excuse me, we can't go that fast. It's my exuberance to respond to the public demand of moving their items. So, back to boring seven. Boring seven. Four. Okay, I forgot, public comment. Our first public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We'll set the time at one minute. Can't handle the mad rush. We will now move on to agenda item eight. Business items for possible action. Any items from the 9:00 AM session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken table withdrawn or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number 42. The massage established license for a change of ownership, 6600 West Charleston Boulevard, Suite 126, was requested. The action of a strike requested by staff.
And that's it?
I move to motion.
Okay, there's a motion on agenda items 10 through 51, save for 42 that's been stricken. That's our motion. Please vote and please post. The motion carries. Thank you very much. And agenda item number nine, possible actions approved, the final minutes by reference of the July 17, 2019 city council meeting. Mayor Pro Tem may have a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the July 17, 2019 city council meeting.
Please vote and please post. And that motion passes as well. And now, we're back to my favorite. Agenda items number 10 through 51, with the exception of item 42. On the consent agenda, these are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments may be enacted in one motion. Please note that the record should reflect my abstention on items number 31 through 33 because they pertain to medical marijuana-related businesses and one of my sons involved in that industry. I'll be voting on all other items. Are there any items that the council would like to be noted? Please, Councilman Knutson.
Mayor, I will need to recuse myself from items number 27 and 28, as those were previous clients of mine.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mayor Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent items number 10 through 51, with the exception of item 42.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we are on to administrative actions. Number 52, report from -- good morning, Mr. Adams. How are you, our wonderful manager?
Good morning. Mayor and City Council, Scott Adams, City Manager. I just had two quick emerging issues that I wanted to relate to you and to the public. I think I've already briefed you on those, but I think they're worth repeating here on this section on the agenda. The first is, as you know, the county moved forward yesterday at their board meeting with a first reading on moving forward with the -- what came out of AB 309 in the legislature, which was an eighth of a percent increase in a sales tax that could be committed to a wide range of things that relate to education, support for education, to include homelessness. And as we've discussed, we probably need to start, and will be starting, a very healthy and very positive partnership dialogue with the council, I mean, the county, to determine how we can play a role, if necessary, and how those funds get affected. The second thing that I wanted to bring out as an emerging issue is, as you know, yesterday the teachers' union of the school district had set a tentative date for a potential strike on September 10th, and I wanted to assure you and the public that we have reached out to the school district to make sure we are coordinated with them in all the things that we do that deal with education and students. As you know, we have a very robust program. I've worked with students at a lot of schools, and clearly that will impact those programs. And we want to make sure we are in lockstep and coordinated with the school district on how we administer those programs and how they'll be affected by any potential strike. So, those are my two reports on emerging issues, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I do want everyone to know that I did speak four times with the commission chair, Kirkpatrick, yesterday on these very issues. It is such an enormous problem. We've had for over 30 years of underpaid faculty and support staff in the Clark County School District, and it's been a forever chase of the dollar. And I always remind people from the Las Vegas Visitor Convention and Visitors Authority that in 1995, 96, there were zero dollars allocated to the schools of the state out of the room tax. Two years ago, the amount that was awarded was 38 cents of every single dollar was going out of room tax, and we kept falling further and further behind. These are our children, and this has been a call to hire and pay for, attract and keep the best in faculty. We're far behind, and the scapegoats have been our teachers. It's appalling. This is nothing new. This has been going on for decades. And so, the results are the programs. And I mentioned that to the commission chair, that we've been talking about this for a long, long time as we watch our children. And there are great programs here and great teachers already, but our support and helping, but not with staffing, just to take care of children in open environments, because the exposure and the parents not knowing where, which school, if they're in a safety before and after. But the dialogue goes on because this city is extremely committed to serving all children with the best quality education we can provide. And the council and the city is not in charge of the school district or anything in education, so we supplement with the morning program and the afternoon program of safety and other wonderful programs like batteries included and other programs for older teens as well. So, I know it's wonderful that you have reached out, Mr. Adams, on behalf of all of us, and we are continuing that dialogue. And just this morning, I was speaking with Councilman Knutson, who has been working very hard trying to bridge and pull together county commissioners, working with us all for the betterment of Southern Nevada. So, we thank you, and thank you, Mr. Knutson. I know all of our council works diligently with representatives in their school districts, and so, we're supportive, but we're not going to get anywhere until we take care of our faculty. So, it is good to be mayor, and it is good to be able to speak. I was told by my mother and father, when you're 40, you can speak. I don't want to hear from you until you're 40. So, I'm over 40, and so, it's good to be able to speak the truth and tell it like it is. We love our teachers, and we want them compensated. So, thank you. You can't fire me. Thank you. Scott, any comments, questions, anyone? Okay, thank you, Mr. Adams. We look forward to your next ones.
Okay, this is item 53, I believe, which is an update on --
Oh, let me read that into the record, please. Agenda item 53, report from Scott D. Adams, City Manager, discussion for possible action on the citywide comprehensive strategic plan. This is in reference to all wards, and we've been working on this for a while.
Okay. So, what I wanted to do is give you a very brief overview of how the city has been achieving the results of the priorities set forth by the council a couple of years ago in a workshop process. I wanted to make two caveats before I start. Number one, recognize that four of you sitting on council were not part of the council that established these priorities. And so, that's a conversation to have at the end of this presentation about where do we go from here? But secondly, this presentation is going to focus on the things that we've done addressing those priorities in the two years since you've set those priorities. We're working on a whole bunch of other things, but this presentation really focuses on the new things that we have gotten going, that we've initiated since we set those priorities. So, first of all, let me just talk about the process that we went through at that time to get to those priorities. We started, we do every year, a citizen satisfaction survey. We poll our residents as to how we're doing as a city on the various services and programs and facilities that we have, what their priorities are. And so, that's always a base. We go to our citizens. Then, we had a director's retreat. We asked our own senior executive team what they thought the priorities should be. We carried that information into a meeting with stakeholders, and that's persons that we felt had a stake in a lot of these issues from throughout the community. And then, all of that information ended up in a workshop at a special meeting of the city council where we set these priorities. And you set six priorities. You said public safety was your number one priority, that you wanted to become the safest, high-profile city in America. Your other priorities were to be iconic, that we should create iconic spaces for residents, visitors, and businesses, that workforce development was a priority, prepare the city's workforce for the future, that we should continue our efforts in being a smart city, become the city of choice to develop smart city applications, we should deal with at-risk populations, to develop strategic partnerships to address their issues and needs, and then, finally, we should address neighborhood preservation, so we can maintain the highest quality of life in our neighborhoods. So, I'll go through each of these one by one. In public safety, we wanted to improve public safety through effective and efficient delivery of services, improve the feeling of safety, and improve safety at our tourist destinations. And so, I'm just going to kind of walk through. You have maintained, through your policy of budget approval, a high priority to public safety. What this graphic shows, and I think you've seen this numerous times, that 71, over 71% of the city's budget is committed to public safety. And as we show here on the slide, you can see how that translates into employment in each of our key departments that directly impact public safety. If you start to look at each department on their own, we've made a significant commitment to each of these areas in detention services, marshals, and animal control, in particular, our city marshals. As you know, we completed the third phase of a three-phase expansion of our marshals. We are not quite yet to the full complement of 90 marshals. We will soon be there, as we get through academies and fully roll out that phasing of expansion of our marshal support program. In fire and rescue, we recognize that it's, we really need to look to the future here, and we've put in place a plan. We've briefed you on, and we've started budget authority to look at where we're going to need new fire stations. We know we're going to need one in Sky Canyon, and we're probably going to need one out in Summerlin. But I think the graphic on the right shows that we have a substantial commitment to this area in fire and rescue, that we deal with a tremendous level of calls for service, and we have a significant department to deal with those calls for service. In the area of municipal court, we have continued to stay the course, and in particular and especially courts, that have been very effective in alternative sentencing and dealing with the population that comes into our court system. And even to the point now where we've made a commitment to them in new space with a new municipal court building and groundbreaking. If you've looked across the street from City Hall, you've seen that the trailers have been mobilized by our contractor, and I'm told that they will be pushing ground today and actually starting the actual construction today on that new building. In the area of emergency management, I made a little tweak, but I don't consider it a little tweak, by moving emergency management into and under one of our chiefs, our chief of public safety. I believe, given this day and age, I'm hearing you saying public safety is your number one priority, that emergency management right now, given what's going on in the national environment and locally, we have to stay the course on this issue. We have to be ready for all the risks that we might experience as a city and not react slowly, but quickly through practice, practice, practice. So, if you've seen, we've been doing a lot of drills dealing with emergency management in terms of dealing with whatever events might come along. In the area of iconic Las Vegas --
Excuse me, Mr. Adams. Councilman Anthony, please.
Yeah, Scott, can you go back to the first slide?
Okay, I got to figure out how to go back here. There we go.
The first slide on public safety, where you have the bullet points for public safety.
Right here.
So, you mentioned the first one, and when you talk about that first category, you're usually talking about, you know, the FBI's public categories like homicide and sexual assault and robbery and burglary. I mean, obviously, we need to pay attention to those, but you skipped over the second bullet point a little bit, and I think this is really important, is do people feel safe in our city? And by that is when they walk out their front door, do they feel like they're in a safe environment? When they go to the park, do they feel like they're in a safe environment? When they go to work, when they drive on our roads, do they feel like they're in a safe environment? Even though there may not be a crime being committed there, do they feel like it's safe? And this comes down to the little stuff that we really need to pay a lot of attention to, because when somebody walks out their front door and they see a shopping cart or graffiti or trash, they don't feel safe. There's no crime technically, I mean graffiti, you know, your husband wanted to cut the thumbs off, which I agree with him on that. But, you know, those aren't big crime categories. When they go to the park and there's a homeless guy sleeping in the park, they don't feel safe. So, there's a lot of cities that don't pay attention to stuff like this. It's called the broken windows theory. We have to pay attention to the small stuff, and I think that's really important that we do that here, because we want people to believe that, we want people to feel like they're in a safe environment when they're traversing around our city. And I just, you know, I mean, as a police officer, I wanted to chase the robbery suspect because that's fun, and you get to throw those guys in jail, and, but graffiti, it's got to be removed the next day. So, I just want to emphasize, because we tend to forget about the little small stuff, but that has a big impact on how people live and whether they feel like they're in a safe place. So, I just wanted to stress that.
I appreciate that, Councilman, and I think if you remember, when we do our citizen satisfaction surveys, that we present the results and findings to you about, we get at that issue. And so, we're able to see trend information over time as to how our citizens feel about that very issue, as to whether they feel safe or not, which is instructive to us as to whether we're doing the right things in those areas.
Right, and that's why I added the last priority at our last strategic meeting, the neighborhood preservation, because that's what, that's really what it's all about, is when people are, the neighborhood they live in, that's where they spend most of their time. They have to feel like it's a safe environment, and that's taking care of the little stuff. So, I know you're going to get to that, but --
Yeah, we will.
I just, sometimes we gloss over that sort of thing.
Yep, and I'm remiss, in the area of public safety, for not mentioning metro, because I, metro is a huge part of our city budget, and I think, again, through your budget policy established, we have maintained a significant commitment to funding metro. In fact, I think it was this year, we maintained, we agreed to make a 6% commitment to metro, and it was the county because of their own set of priorities that scaled that back, that caused us to scale ours back because of the formula. But we've been committed to a healthy metro, and I wanted to make that comment because it's not, what I'm dealing with here are direct functions that we control as a city with inside-city government.
Well, and if I might add, Mr. Adams, too, you know, to the public, obviously, we never all meet together. We're not allowed to meet four of us at a time. So, sometimes concepts come up, such as what Councilman Anthony just mentioned, which reminded me, it's communication to our residents. What do they do? How do they notify? And knowing Mr. Regelman is taking his son to college, and we have lovely Diana Paul from RPIO, the question is, do we have, apropos of what Councilman Anthony was talking about, a notification on our cell phones? Is it through Go Vegas? How are we notifying the people what to do when you find graffiti or get that information that you have an issue in your residential area? You first, obviously, call your councilperson in wards 1 through 6, but beyond that, for immediate attention or over the weekends. So, can that be up and be sure that it's on and clear on our website?
Yes, we'll make a note of that. The other thing related to that is we are working on a better tracking system for when those come in. On the backend of that, be sure that there are no ball drops on those complaints or comments that come through that system.
Okay, thank you.
Back to iconic Las Vegas, the first bullet here really deals with quite a bit downtown, but it also citywide infrastructure and streetscape amenities. The next one is about incentivizing private investment, creating and preserving public spaces through public art, recreation, and green spaces, developing and preserving event facilities, which is a big part of our economic base, and then, increasing arts education awareness and public art. And again, there's a lot of things we're working on directly that we've done over the last couple of years since we set those priorities. We brought forth a major project that we've, it's preliminarily titled The Epicenter, which is the Renaissance Company's plan to transform Cashman with a centerpiece of that being Major League Soccer. And if you've been to the Amalos's website lately, we are now, you know, literally, two years ago, we weren't on their radar screen. We are now being discussed as one of the vying contenders for the next Major League Soccer expansion team. So, stay tuned. We're in the middle of that now, working diligently, and that'll be the centerpiece of a transformative project that will deal with a very large area of our downtown, that being the area around Cashman. And these two projects that I'm featuring here are large-scale, area-wide projects that should be transformative to the areas that they're centered around. That next one is Project Enchilada. As you know, our city attorney has become somewhat pseudo redevelopment agency director and is pushing a project that is important to the east end of downtown and is really getting legs. It's resonating out in the private investment community, and I think, again, will be one of those projects that 10, 20 years from now, we're going to really see the fruits of our labor in that project. Other projects that have happened just literally in that last two years are the Expo Center at World Market, which is under construction, a new 300,000-square-foot convention center downtown. We're going to be soon opening two new parking garages at Symphony Park, and we've broken ground on two major housing projects in Symphony Park. In the gaming community, we are seeing two big projects come out of the ground. Circa, which is rapidly going floor by floor, I think they're doing about one floor a week now, heading towards, I think it's going to be 45 floors, and then, the downtown grand with CIM Group is out of the ground with their next tower. Also, CIM has told us they're going to, they are now going to proceed to do everything they need to by year end to start their retail development on the land around the Mob Museum. So, our gaming community is very robust. Collectively, all the investment that we're experiencing downtown approximates $2 billion. So, we're in the midst of a major, major building boom downtown, and we have become Orange Cone Heaven downtown, and we're, that's the other end of that, is our whole Public Works and other teams are really doing a great job in managing the impacts of these projects on the streetscape. I have mentioned the municipal court groundbreaking. In the area of the medical district, we have been systematically working through that area with streetscaping. We're working on a big one, which is really the backbone of the medical district, which is Shadow Lane. And then, another really big one is Third Street. We have about a five-block length of Third Street, which will become a linear park with dramatic new streetscaping that will not only beautify that area, but add greatly-needed linear open space to an area of downtown that has really become a downtown neighborhood where a lot of our housing is. And then, in the areas of open space and public art, we launched our new gateway signs at the Main Street Las Vegas end of downtown, Las Vegas Boulevard end of downtown. We initiated the Healing Garden two years ago. We've been doing mural programs. We did a dramatic new mural at the fire station. We've had Radial Symmetry, the new major public art piece at the entryway to Main and Commerce to the Arts District. As we speak, the public art is being installed for Project Neon at Charleston and the 15, which will dramatically improve the entryway into downtown. It actually works as an entryway two ways. It works as an entryway to downtown, but it also works as an entryway the other way into the medical district. And then, we've got other minor projects, such as our artistic bike rock program. So, in the area of cultural arts and public art, there's been a lot going on. In the area of workforce development, the goals there were to support efforts to increase technical and vocational training, support higher ed, support the continuum of education from pre-K through workforce development, foster business parks and employment centers, and increase the presence of higher ed facilities within the city. And we've continued to expand our Strong Start pre-K academies. We rolled out the mobile pre-K classroom. We actually had that, if you remember, parked out front for the launch of that, and we have been expanding our Connect Home program through Wi-Fi and tablets in areas where there's need. In workforce development under employment and training, we've had a number of showcase, construction career showcase events, veterans' job and resource fairs, and dealing with youth employment. And then, finally, we're visioning, as we speak, in terms of building a new workforce development and training center to serve the urban core, and still staying the course on concepting and finding a location for a higher ed hub. I think with the vision there is that downtown, at the center of the valley, can be a center of higher education, bringing together a number of different entities or institutions to provide education. In the area of Smart Vegas, and this is one that, it's kind of a sleeper. It has really, really blown up. It's really about increasing public-private partnerships to develop a smart city, investing in smart city applications for ourselves, for operational efficiencies, embrace opportunities for financial and environmental sustainability, expand innovative technology and connectivity to residents, and then, to implement virtual platforms to engage our public and provide service delivery, such as the Go Vegas app. In the area of the innovation district, we've now created the Innovation, the International Innovation Center at the Bank of America Building. It is full now. We have tested autonomous vehicles, and we've, we're successful in the GoMed application for grant funding for the medical district. We've been a test bed for autonomous vehicles in the -- We've been a testbed for autonomous vehicles in the downtown area. You've seen Aptiv and a number of vehicles floating around in the downtown area, using downtown as a testbed, and we've been able to receive a number of major commitments from private companies to the city to work with them in partnerships on smart city technologies. So this is an area. I just read an article in a trade publication, governmental trade publication, that now has us as one of the top seven cities in America in smart city development. We went from zero to being in the top seven literally in two years. So I think this shows there's a strong commitment to that goal that you've set forth.
And please mention about our international connectivity. We are becoming a real focus for countries and...
Yes. And that's been a big part of that. I think a lot of these partnerships have been international partnerships with companies outside the United States wanting to come in and explore their technologies with the city of Las Vegas. Just as an example, and this slide really is just to show you how explosive it's been, we hosted 50 NTT executives at the Innovation Center to showcase what we've been doing in advancing technology and innovation. The tweet was viewed by over 10,000 persons on that one event, and you see the profile and where those persons are from that actually viewed that event. We are on the radar screen of technology, not just in America but globally. And we have an incredible team led by Michael Sherwood, but our Economic and Urban Development Department and many others are very engaged now in this, and it's going to help us internally in our operations, but it's also going to be serious economic development because we're getting a lot of companies coming in. As I said, a lot of this effort is internally focused, too, through our website, Go Vegas, streaming services, and a number of others. At-risk populations, I think the key here, the one big area that we've been very engaged in is homelessness. There are others, but homelessness is the one that really is really taking a lot of our time and attention. And so we are moving forward with constructing the permanent courtyard. There's a sketch and overview schedule what that will look like. And we continue our homeless partnerships. We are now up to three teams with our more teams. We added two in 19. We are working partnerships on mental and physical health services that would surround the courtyard, and then we have been doing work in the area of developing housing that would be transitional housing to move homeless persons into housing.
Could you speak to, Mr. Adams, the more program? What is that?
Well, it's a set of teams, as I've said, we have three of these, that bring both law enforcement and social service providers who work in the homeless space together to work the streets, approach homeless individuals, and convince those homeless persons to get off the street and seek assistance, whatever may be necessary depending on their individual circumstances, and matriculate into those services. So it could be they need employment help, it could be they need mental health services, it could be something else. But the whole point of having a comprehensive team with law enforcement is to approach those folks and get them off the street and hopefully stay off the street.
And is this a 10-hour day, 12-hour day, 24/7?
I think it would turn to our team to understand the timing, around-the-clock timing of which we're deploying our more teams. I think Peter is going to come up here and address that question.
Thank you. Because again, too, it's all about communication and letting the people know what do they do if they need assistance. So if you would announce who you are, Peter.
Sure. I'm Pete Jan Kauskin, Deputy Director in Community Services. The teams include Metro, US Vets, West Care, Salvation Army, and Help of Southern Nevada. Four days a week right now, trying to expand those hours, but usually during the daylight hours and sometimes on the weekends, but mostly four days a week, Monday through Thursday.
So in the off-hours, if a business or residential area has issues, is there a hotline or something?
There is. There is a hotline. I don't have the number right on me right now, but you can contact, and they will send out a team at that time. But usually Monday through Thursday, we're working.
Well, you, as we, I mean, I think this is a service needs to be available 24/7. I know it always costs money, and we're not in the currency business yet, but hopefully you will get that information out because I think as a resident of this community. And then creating all these basic pods of what we're trying to do is we are trying to set a model that can be replicated in other municipalities or in the open community at large, that they can replicate all these different programs that we have, correct or not?
And we work in conjunction with the county. The county also has, I figured the acronym for their teams, but they work coordinated. So we work with the county.
Wonderful. Because I know the county's very involved, and as obviously, we're all one big community, and I know Commissioner Chair Kirkpatrick, and I speak so frequently. It's a bonding here, but we want to make sure what we're doing really is something that is working and that can be replicated in other areas of the Southern Nevada area. So, thank you. But please get us 24/7.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Scott.
And then quickly, we've been engaged with the Mission High School, which is our CCSD secondary school that deals with students recovering from substance abuse and other dependencies, and then the Harbor, which is a multi-agency resource center for youth and families. Neighborhood preservation, this is the last, but certainly not the least, and quality of life. I think those goals are pretty self-explanatory to provide a level of constituent services, preserve parks, recreation, and open space, and provide revitalization and programming in at-risk neighborhoods. And, you know, the master plan for open space and trails addresses this, especially in the urban core. Let me just mention that in one of, we also developed the Bearden Family Paseo, which is a small linear park that, on the entranceway into the Medical District. We opened the East Las Vegas Library, which is going to have a major impact on residential areas around it. We've continued and have expanded our perimeter wall painting program, and we've developed some pop-up parks. These are just a few examples. We continue and have expanded constituent responsive services. We developed an Neighborhood Association handbook. We've developed a centralized system and database to work and outreach with neighborhoods. And really, this last one really addresses the issue that Councilman Anthony brought up, which is continued substantial code enforcement response efforts to nuisance and safety issues within neighborhoods, with staying the course and maintaining diligence in those areas. Finally, and this really cuts across all of them...
Mr. Adams, Councilman Anthony.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, though. You had the slide about painting the walls. I mean, you cannot believe when Jerry Walkers folks go out and paint the wall that looks like crap, and now it looks nice, and people call my office and say, hey, thanks for painting the wall. You know, it was just that little thing, and now they're impressed with the city of Las Vegas because they came out and painted the wall. So it's little stuff like that that really, that really excites our residents.
And I will...
That gets them, that they start thinking, hey, our city's taking care of our neighborhoods. So it's just little stuff like that that just has such a big impact.
That program has been so impactful that some of our neighboring jurisdictions have copied it. I mean, it has been very, very effective. Finally, I think we've done all this in spite of what we've been communicating with you is we've had a structural deficit. The last two budgets were not easy to balance. And as we've mentioned previously, we formed a team, Team 2020, to look at the budget, to uncover every idea we can in terms of how we can save money. We've developed a vacancy management program. And then the other thing I did want to mention is we've ramped up and are moving forward to the Mayor's Fund for Las Vegas Life, because this gives us a way to allow the private sector to engage financially with the city and commit dollars to specific programs that I've outlined, some of those, and gives the city some stretch in tight-budget time. So that's another thing that I wanted to point out, that that happened...
With accountability and transparency...
That's right.
So that hopefully your staff, our staff, are responding to the needs when the people want to donate to this, that we get back to them where their actual dollars are going. Because nobody gives unless they know where they're giving to. So it's been very successful, and we learned from other communities that had established mayor's funds, and it's very, very effective, and hopefully will continue to be successful and grow.
So, next steps. As I mentioned at the outset, these six priorities were established by a council, which only three of you said today. There are four of you that were not engaged in setting those six priorities. So it could be appropriate at this time to, for the council to consider moving forward with another process similar to what we engaged in before, to establish a new set of priorities for our council, for our city. So I would leave you with that. That would be an appropriate action to take as a result of the presentation, to direct staff to proceed with engaging council and a new workshop development process to establish new council priorities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adams. I think that is a wise suggestion that should be automatic, that we would continue to keep updating and include the public as well in these gatherings as you have in the past. So any comments? Yes, Councilman Knutson? Please.
Thank you, Mayor. And, Mr. Adams, I'm very grateful for the thought that you put into this presentation. You're one of the most strategic people I've ever met, and so I, the fact that you're at the head of the organization as the city manager, I'm grateful for that. One of the things coming on board that I wanted to ask about is our thought about what the future of Las Vegas will look like. For me, it seems like much of the actions are geared towards the current population's needs, but in my experience, it seems like our population is drastically changing, and there is forecasts, at least from the Regional Transportation Commission, that our population growth over the next 10, 15, 20 years is to be expected to be very high. And so I'm just curious how we think about what our population will look like 10 years from now, and are we setting the foundation so that we're successful 10 years from now as well?
That's a very good observation. I will say that in the last process we went through, there was a great deal of discussion about that. Using that kind of old tired metaphor, where is the puck going to be and how do we skate to get to it? So I think some of the things that came out of that discussion and then found its way into priorities are reflective of that. For example, the whole concept of smart cities represents the fact that we are dramatically changing in areas that we just can't stand still on, and we've got to move to where our citizens want us to be. And so I, you know, it's kind of hard to crystal ball exactly where that demographic's going to be 10, 20 years from now. I think we can have a high-level conversation of where that we think that will be and make sure that our policies and priorities are reflective of where we think that's going to be so that we, the organization moves with that.
Okay. Mayor, if I may? And I think, and I'm, I think for me, it would be a great opportunity. I know that the previous council has had opportunity to sit through strategic planning. And coming on to the council, I think, maybe not to rehash because a lot of work was done in the past, but to at least set aside some time for this new council to think through the existing priorities and provide feedback and input, and at least set the stage, for me as a new incoming council member, on how I can add to the existing strategic plan and be most effective. So notwithstanding any other direction from the council members, I would appreciate the opportunity for another strategy discussion amongst the council and you and your team.
Okay. Thank you very much. And as I always do, as we go forward, I'm going to turn to Mayor Protem. But, you know, as we plan for the future, we have issues today, and I'd always love to see a column in everything we're doing, what are we doing about the problems today? Because 15 years, 20 years out is wonderful, and we've got a plan to be wise, but we have to handle this today for the people who love and live in Las Vegas. So Mayor Protem, if I might ask you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve us having another strategic meeting.
Okay. There's a motion to approve the presentation. Please vote to accept the report.
I'm going to change my motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
We're going to make a motion to accept the report, so then we can go further and do a strategic plan.
And continue into a strategic planning, please. So please vote and please post.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With that direction to staff, we will begin in earnest to start charting a course for how we can do that, come back to you in briefings and meetings with a plan for how we could do that and engage you on developing that plan.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Agenda Item 54, report by Shawnee Coleman, Deputy Director of Legislative Affairs concerning the Las Vegas Medical District, Ward 1, Councilman Knutson's area. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Very excited to be here before you today. We haven't done a comprehensive update on the Las Vegas Medical District for city council in about three years, so there's a lot of exciting stuff in here, and I'll go ahead and get to it. I know we have three new council members, and so they may not be familiar with some of this, so please feel free to stop me and ask questions as I move through. So what is the Las Vegas Medical District? Back in 1997, City of Las Vegas realized that we had a grouping of healthcare-related businesses around Charleston and Shadow Lane. And so the City of Las Vegas, through planning, took steps to establish the Medical District. The area originally was Rancho, MLK, Charleston, and Alta. The original area was about 214 acres. Through a process that I'll talk a little bit about, we've expanded that. But currently, right now, the Medical District has about 2.2 million square feet of space, and it houses businesses such as our University Medical Center, Valley Hospital, our now wonderful UNLV School of Medicine, and others. So where is the district? District, as I said, we've expanded the area, but pretty much it spans from Valley View, it encompasses Charleston, Bonneville. We've expanded it. It now goes up through MLK to the 95, and actually swings over to capture World Market Center and Symphony Park. Great thing about our Medical District is it's very centralized. We've done a study, in off-peak hours, you can get from the Galleria Mall in Henderson or the northwest up in Centennial Park, you can get to our Las Vegas, our centralized Las Vegas Medical District in about 20 minutes. So this is something that's very convenient for everybody in the Las Vegas Valley. What area does it cover? So here you'll see on the map, this is the full Medical District as was approved by you in December of 2015. And there's an area that we like to focus on. It includes the original area that was bounded by Charleston, Rancho, MLK, and Alta, but we've added another thing. Looking at the future of the Medical District, we added the south side of Charleston. It was important for us to add the south side of Charleston because there's a lot of vacant land there, and there's a lot of opportunity for redevelopment. And this actually increased the size of our core, what we call the core Medical District, from 214 to 252 acres. Partnership. Partnerships are important. In starting this process, we reached out to the stakeholders in the district, UMC, Valley Hospital, UNLV at the time, this is before they... before they actually had the School of Medicine, they were just starting a conversation about that. And we established great partnerships. Through that, there's the Las Vegas Medical District Advisory Council. We meet every other month. And this really is the top-of-the-top professionals that have entities in the, have entities in the medical district. And we talk about policy things. We talk about things that are important to them. We, as a city, try to avoid and stay out of the healthcare business, but we try to understand what are the things that impact their business that the City of Las Vegas can be helpful to them for. So mission. Through that partnership, we decide, we got together and said, okay, what could Las Vegas Medical District be? And I do want to take a minute to read this because I think it's something that's important. By 2030, the Las Vegas Medical District will be the clinical care, research, wellness, education, training center of Southern Nevada, and the premier academic medical district in southwest United States. Key, something very important in that is academic. Many of us know that, as a valley, we have pockets of healthcare, pockets of hospitals throughout the valley. But the one thing that is different about the Las Vegas Medical District is academic healthcare. UNLV School of Medicine, UNLV Dental School provides a different level or a different quality of care, and we want to make sure that everybody in the valley understands that, and that we continue to strive for that excellence. So some of the assets that, oops, I went too fast. Go back. Some of the assets that we currently have in the medical district, we have four hospitals. We have UMC, we have Valley Hospital. UMC has a separate children's hospital, and we also have Horizon Hospital, which is a long-term acute care hospital. UMC, only Level One Trauma Center in the entire state. If something bad happens, if the president happens to be in town, this is the hospital that they're going to. Some statistics about the medical district, about 950 hospital beds, 33 surgical suites, 240 dental chairs through UNLV's dental, or School of Dental Medicine, and they see about 200,000 patients per year approximately. Education. As I mentioned, education and academia is something that's very important to our Las Vegas Medical District. We have two teaching hospitals. UNLV School of Medicine, prior to that, U and R students use UMC as their teaching hospital, but also Torre University uses Valley Hospital as a teaching hospital. We have wet lab space, and we have a world-renowned simulation center. Simulation center, if you haven't had an opportunity to go there, I would suggest that you do so. It's really a place where nurses, doctors have high levels of training. If you want, you can have the ability to play with some of the robots. They have robots that do everything from simulate heart attacks to actually giving birth. So it's a real opportunity for students learning healthcare to get top-notch training. Investments. City of Las Vegas, we've started this process, really looking at the medical district as an economic opportunity, back in 2013. And since that time, we've invested about $73 million in infrastructure, marketing, and planning. And that includes things, like Scott mentioned, that includes things like updating streets. We're going to a complete street program. Scott mentioned Shadow Lane. That project will be starting, hopefully, the end of this year, and we have other projects planned. But we also have planned about $121 million of future investment, and that includes things like a large parking structure and some BRT, our portion of BRT, the Maryland Parkway BRT, Rapid Bus System, that will roll into our medical district down Maryland Parkway. Economic impact. So what does all of the investment that we're making do? So as you see there, by 2030, that's our number, we're hoping if we, if we implement our master plan, that would be about $2.4 billion in economic investment in, in the state. And then for just the medical district itself, that's about 16,000 jobs. Now, this number, these numbers don't actually include the full rollout and build-out of UNLV School of Medicine. If we add the UNLV School of Medicine in there, that economic impact number jumps to $3.6 billion, and the total number of jobs jumps to 24,000 jobs. So this is something that's important to the City of Las Vegas. Master planning. As I mentioned earlier, in 2015, we brought before a city council a master plan that outlines how we were going to develop and how we were going to move through the process of building out the Las Vegas Medical District. Our consultants, the Smith Group, worked with us for about 18 months. Prior to that, we held a number of community meetings, we had a number of focus groups and sessions with stakeholders, with neighbors around there. And so this is the plan. And as you can see, they estimate that if we build out the medical district correctly, that we could add about, we could have about 19 million square feet of usable space. So you take that, we're at about 2 million now in 19. So there's about 17 million square feet of space that we have to plan and work with, and work with private developers, and work with our current stakeholders to build out. And so some of the accomplishments, like I said, we haven't done an update for you guys in about three years. So some of the things that we've accomplished in the past couple of years, we've established the Las Vegas Medical District as a brand. So we established the green and blue logo that you see there, we, we established the website, and we also established the newsletter that goes, that electronic newsletter that gets sent out to a database about every other month. Project Neon. We were fortunate, as we were starting this process, NDOT was also looking and starting Project Neon. Project Neon afforded us a lot in the way of, I should say, cleaning up the area and providing a clean aesthetic palette for us to grow and move forward with. And so one of the things that came from that is the new entrance at MLK and Wellness Way. Originally, that wasn't there. It used to be a street called Bearden, and I'll talk a little bit about that, street called Bearden, but it didn't go all the way through to MLK. The Project Neon, Project Neon actually allowed us to create a new entrance, and it allowed us to establish the, the new signage that you see there. So we have new monument signs and pylon signs to identify the entrance of the medical district. Wellness Way. In the medical district originally, there were two streets. One was Gold Ring, which was west of Shadow Lane. The other was Bearden, which was east of Shadow Lane, and those streets were offset. So one of the things we did is we created a new signalized intersection at Wellness Way and Shadow Lane. But in order to create that new intersection, we needed to figure out, okay, do we name the street Gold Ring? Do we name the street Bearden? Or do we do something completely different? And so we chose to do something completely different, and we chose a name that reflected what we felt was going on in the area. So the street name was changed to Wellness Way. But in changing the street name to Wellness Way, we wanted to make sure that we retain the history of what the Bearden family was. So Bearden Family were descendants of Robert E. Lake, and so we had an opportunity to create some open space. And so Bearden Family Paseo was created, and we dedicated that to, that paseo to the family last year. Redevelopment. And so as the city is investing in the Las Vegas Medical District, we also have private investment in the Las Vegas Medical District. And what I'm going to go through is just two projects that happened because of Project Neon. The first is actually called the Neon, and it sits on the corner of what is now MLK and in Alta. This, this building was originally hidden behind some other apartments. When Project Neon came in and tore out some of those apartments, this became visible to the street. And the owners of this property spent about $2.6 million on this. They've invested about $1.2 million into, into this property. And so now we have a property and apartment complex, about 44 units, that's valued at over $6 million. And the same thing with Revive. This particular property is owned by, and operated by North Cap Commercial. The same thing. It was hidden behind other apartments. It now fronts MLK, 46 units. To date, they've invested about $400,000 into this project, and you can see the before and afters. And they're still doing some investments. They're gutting the interior of the units and installing things like granite countertops and making them more appealing to the type of clients that we are seeing in the medical district with the students and the doctors and things like that. UNLV School of Medicine. So approximately a month ago, the Nevada System of Higher Education Board of Regents approved for UNLV to go out and, and start looking for financing up to $125 million to start construction of the Medical Education Building. And so the building that you see pictured there is the new proposed School of Medicine building. It's about 140,000 square feet. It's four stories. They're looking to start construction on this building in late, or early or mid 2021, and have occupancy late 2022. Form-based code. Form-based code was something that we worked with our planning department on. In order to effectuate, in order to get to a point where developers could build out about 17 million square feet of space, we had to have a development code that made it easy and understandable for people to do that. And so form-based code was brought in to make that happen. We looked at our master plan and said, okay, what are all of the things that we should and need to be doing? And we developed a form-based code that allows that to easily happen. What you see there, the red hash mark, that's a, that's a test area. We've already had some conversations with Councilman Knutson, Knutson, about the opportunities of expanding that. And so all of the medical district is covered by the same zoning. And so that may be something that we bring to you in a future date. So incentives. So just like most of our redevelopment area, we have incentives. One incentive is very specific. It helps with exterior and interior improvements for specific types of businesses. We worked with applied analysis to understand what were the gaps, what were the things that we were missing in our medical district. And then we worked with our stakeholders to help us prioritize those things. And so the medical district target industry program was the result of all of that work that we've done. In addition, our business licensing has put in place some fee waivers, origination fee waivers, and so, for the same types of businesses. So a new business coming in, we can provide assistance with interior and exterior improvements to the building, and then we can also provide assistance on the business licensing in. And then because a good portion of our medical district falls within the redevelopment agency, we still have the other incentives that we can provide. We have tax increment financing. Our Las Vegas Medical District falls within an opportunity zone. We have new market tax credits and other, other incentives that we can provide. Optum Care. This is opened earlier this year. This is a new facility at Rancho and Charleston. This is a 55-suite facility that focuses on providing care, care and treatment for cancer patients. This is an old building that they have refurbished and turned into something that is supportive and something that was needed in the medical district. So here are just a few notables that I want to talk about. We had the unfortunate situation of one October. And I want to point out, none of us were prepared for that. None of us would ever thought that that would happen. But our partners actually stepped up, UMC being the only Level One Trauma Center. You can see the stats there. Anybody who arrived at UMC alive, left UMC alive. And so I think, to their testament, they were able to take in about 104 patients very quickly, all at a time, and they did a wonderful job. Our medical district was home to, was chosen by the CDC to, for a national survey, healthcare survey that was being done in the area. Cleveland Clinic. Just last month, they celebrated their, their 10-year anniversary, and that's something to be celebrated. We have a wonderful relationship with Review Journal. Once a year, we put out a special section between the print and online. That circulation gets up to about a half a million people looking at it per year. So what's in the future? Scott mentioned our GoMed project. This is a grant that we received, a $5.3 million grant that we received from the Federal Department of Transportation to establish autonomous vehicles that will connect our existing downtown Bonneville Transit Center to the Las Vegas Medical District. We're looking at technology. In the next 12 months, we hope to have the Las Vegas Medical District, at least the core of the district, covered by Wi-Fi, have continued public works projects. Shiner's Hospital is something interesting. This is something that we have worked on. Scott and I actually worked on for a number of years. And so they are establishing a partnership with UMC, where they will start with a telemedicine program, and then move to actually having permanent physical facilities here on a regular basis. As some of you may know, Shiner's comes in once a quarter, and they provide services to those in the City of Las Vegas, and they're looking to expand that, that operation. And finally, want to talk about the parking garage. There's, maybe, many of you may have heard a lot about this. This is a facility that the city is looking to build in partnership with UNLV and UMC. This particular concept that you see here is about 900 parking spaces. It includes about 60,000 square feet of office space, and about 40,000 square feet of retail on the ground floor. Parking is one of those things that we're not in the midst of the healthcare business. Most hospitals, clinics need parking, but it's not something that directly contributes to their bottom line. And so here's an opportunity for the stakeholders in the medical district to work together to provide a service that they can have through economies of scale. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. This is just really exciting, and something everybody's been so involved in, and bringing this about, because certainly, safety one, but healthcare two, without question. They're almost hand in hand. In your report, before I turn it over to council, a question. Because we have redevelopment area one and two, why is not Mountain View included, being down Tenea? And they do, they are doing residential, I mean, resident training as well. I was just at an opening of their OBGYN, All Services All Ages Care, and they pride themselves as well. But I don't know if they fall in, certainly we have the Summerlin Hospital, we have so many choices in town. But knowing you're zeroing in on the medical district and the redevelopment areas, just wondering, is Mountain View part of redevelopment area two?
Mountain View Hospital, that area, is not part of a redevelopment agents, area. We do, they were actually, used to be the Las Vegas Technology Park, and they changed their name because of the same thing. They have Mountain View Hospital, and they have a conglomeration of healthcare-related in that area. We wanted to focus on the downtown Las Vegas Medical District to establish the brand. And then once we get that brand established, then we can look at, okay, how do we include other partners in the process?
Well, I just, I would encourage Councilman Knutson, I'm going to turn this over to, really to explore that, because they have been very heavily committed to resident training. And they're already there, and there is that sliver going up Tenea that was included in redevelopment two. So I just, to put that on your radar to work with the UD, and of course, Ms. Coleman here. But thank you. Any comments, questions, before I turn it over to our council? Word one shows yours. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Coleman, for the presentation. I'm so incredibly grateful that the city had the foresight to, to think about the medical district and to start the initial planning stages, and for your leadership, and obviously the leadership of Mr. Adams. I told Mayor Protem that I wouldn't speak longer than three minutes, so I'm going to make it very brief, and I'm going to speak very quickly. So before I was a council member, I was a parent, and I'm still a parent. And I want to be very clear, having a child at UMC is not the experience that I think anybody wants. And so it's wonderful to talk about how great the medical district is. And so it's wonderful to talk about how great the medical district is, but at 3:00 in the morning, there's physicians that will tell you, you should go out of state, because we don't have the right services here in our community. And I will get emotional, because it's very hard to have doctors telling you while you're sitting in the hospital that you shouldn't be here, you should be somewhere else. In the last six months, my pediatrician has left Las Vegas. Our immunologist retired early because he didn't want to stay in Las Vegas. Our ENT surgeon just moved to San Diego, because I believe there's better reimbursement rates. Medical care, I think, is more important than the streets and the infrastructure. I think that's the city's role. But I think we need to be very, very competitive in thinking about what the medical district can and will be. I think we need political strategies related to the development of healthcare in our community. I think we need development strategies, and I think the city's done wonderful in that. But we need to understand what the development community needs and expects from the city of Las Vegas. Healthcare in itself is incredibly competitive. And while we are not in the healthcare business, and I do not pretend to be in the healthcare industry, I think the city of Las Vegas needs to understand what the healthcare industry is and be very competitive, and understand how to support it and grow it within our community. I think that means understanding reimbursement rates, like I learned from the mayor two years ago, when she spoke about it in our State of the City address. We need to understand what it is that will incent specialists to come into Las Vegas that will have the greatest impact on our growing population. What is our population going to look like 10 years from now, and how do we make sure that the medical and healthcare field is prepared to meet that demand? I think we need to understand what specialists need in order to come into our community. And I do think that requires an understanding of reimbursement rates. I think it means an understanding of the area around the medical district, the infrastructure, the education systems. And I think our strategy needs to be very comprehensive in understanding all of those components, so that we can have real conversations around healthcare, the healthcare industry, the hospital industry, the physician group industry. And in each of those conversations, we should be thinking about what our population will look like 10 years from now, and start developing the medical district to support that. Two days ago, we held a meeting, and Ms. Coleman, you were there. It was led by our Economic and Urban Development. I asked several of the developers to come in and talk about, really, the redevelopment of big-box stores, but it was primarily targeted towards the medical district. How do we redevelop the medical district so that we are very competitive in that market space? They identified several areas that I just want to put out there, because I think it's important, and I want to get support from this city council as well. One was the public infrastructure to support a growing and budding medical district. If we do need to grow or expand UMC, that requires a significant partnership with the county. If we wanted children's hospital, which I very much do, we need to find the appropriate land and take necessary actions to get the infrastructure in place to support a children's hospital. The developers are asking for a team approach between public works, planning, and the Economic and Urban Development. So if they walked in to the city trying to develop, having a consistent vision from the city of Las Vegas is very important to them. And they also need to understand the demographics surrounding the area. I understand that probably better than anybody right now of what our neighbors want and what they don't want. We need to have a very clear understanding of what the community looks like now, what they demand, and also plan for the future. And then they asked for flexible zoning, and you mentioned that in your presentation, coming back to the city council with maybe potentially a flexible or different zoning than what we currently have. I don't have the answer to that, but I know it's an important component to being competitive within the healthcare field, especially in the medical district. So I'm very, very grateful. But my thought right now is, we need to be very competitive, and I want to be competitive with you. So those are my comments, and I'm grateful, Mayor, for giving me three and a half minutes.
Well, I just, that was really articulate and focused and clear direction, I think, that we all agree with and heard, because there is nothing more important except safety with healthcare. So thank you. And with that, because it's your ward, and because the report was wonderful, and thank you, Shawnee, for giving it so articulately, have you make your motion, please? Well, we're going to accept her report.
I will make a motion to accept the report and compete.
Good. So we're going to vote it in anyway, just so that we have a record that we are accepting your report. Pardon? It's not written that way? All right. Well, you've heard the words, it's more important. And it's a public record, so that's even more important, and everybody heard it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And we are now on to Agenda Item 55, Discussion for Possible Action to Select an Offerer, Including Presentations by the Top Two Offerers Regarding an Exclusive Negotiation Agreement to Serve as a Basis for Entering into a Development Agreement for RSOQ Number 190211-JH. Development Partner Master Plan Northwest Las Vegas, Department of Economic and Urban Development, Ward Six, and that's Mayor Protem Fury. Hello.
Hello, Your Honor. Tom Perigo, Executive Director of Community Development. So we had the presentations last week. This week is now an opportunity for council to have a conversation, hopefully make a selection. But this item really started back in April. We received statements of qualification from firms interested in partnering with the city on the development of the Upper Las Vegas Wash, 1,092-acre parcel of land north of Moccasin. Your staff's subject matter experts narrowed that list down to two. They made presentations to you last week, and over the last couple of weeks, they, through a series of briefings, have provided more detailed information and answered questions. So at this time, staff is recommending that you select one of the teams. Both, I think, staff believes are highly qualified and can deliver on your vision for how that master plan community will be developed. And so we recommend you select one and direct staff to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement with one of the firms. But right now, I would like to, one of our critical partners, among so many partners we have, is United States Air Force. And I'd like to introduce Colonel Snyder. Many of you have met Colonel Tippett. He was a former commander, and Colonel Snyder has taken his place, and he'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, and thank you for all that you're going to be bringing to our community. We're just so grateful that our air force is here and doing so much to make everybody safe. So thank you.
Absolutely. Mayor Goodman and members of council, it is an absolute honor to be here today. My name is Colonel Brian Snyder. I'm the 432nd Mission Support Group Commander at Crete Air Force Base. What a mission support group commander is, is kind of like a mayor of the base. So I kind of feel at home. The backbone to every military installation across the United States is their local community. So as residents of the Las Vegas community, we sincerely thank you for your support to our airmen. If there's one thing that every airmen needs, it's a safe community, a community designed for military members in northwest Las Vegas. This will significantly benefit the lives of thousands of airmen and their families. This development wouldn't just be living arrangements, but the infrastructure of a support system, providing families much-needed proximity to critical services such as hospitals, schools, and childcare. Ultimately, this will enable Crete airmen to vote their full attention toward the mission and their country, because now they know that their families are safe and have the support at home. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Colonel. We appreciate your taking the time to be with us and care so much for all the servicemen and women that are taking care of us, too. Thank you, Mr. Perigo. So are you ready to turn it over to Mayor Protem?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you so much, Colonel. Thank you so much, Mr. Perigo. Today is the 50th city council meeting since I was sworn in, and this is one of the toughest decisions I have had to make. As a matter of fact, you know when you're kind of nervous and your tummy kind of gets those rumblings? That's what's going on. We have had two outstanding developers before us today, and we need to decide which the city will partner with. Make no mistake, this is not choosing a developer. The decision we make today is who will be our potential partner. This vote is not the final decision, rather, who we'll start negotiations with. After the city votes, staff will negotiate with one of the two developers and come back to council for our approval of that contract. What makes this decision so hard is that we have such good companies to pick from. Olympia has been an outstanding corporate citizen in Ward Six, where they developed Sky Canyon. In addition, they developed Mountains Edge in Clark County. Both are exemplary communities that have won numerous awards. Our other choice developed Green Valley, Aliante, and Summerlin. All three of these communities have also won numerous awards, and we would be lucky to have any of these communities in Ward Six. This decision will be historical. The BLM has never worked closer with the local government than they have with Tom Perigo on this property of 1,092 acres. If we do this right, we will be a model for the nation. The Department of Defense is partnering with us to develop housing for both Nellis and Crete Air Force bases. The attorneys representing the air force for the military housing across the country call our attorney, Seth Floyd, in our city's attorney's office almost every week to see where we are in this process. This is how important this project is to the air force. Again, the way this is being structured has never been done before. And again, we can be a model for our nation. I have traveled to Washington, D.C., three times in the last two years, just on this project to move it forward. I have met with the Secretary of Interior and every member of our congressional team to make sure this day came about. We have had meetings with generals here in City Hall to discuss the military housing and how we can make military members an integral part of our community. I want to thank every person that I have talked to about this project. September 6th will mark the two-year anniversary of this council approving the Upper Las Vegas Vision Plan. This plan is the blueprint of the partnership we are voting on today. I want both companies before us today to know that this council will hold whomever we choose to this plan. We will not compromise at all on this plan. This is not the Gordian Knot, and this council is not Alexander the Great. We cannot just cut this project in two. So how do I decide how to make a decision? Gary Goit, head of Olympia, is a model developer in Ward Six. Mark Fine has wonderful projects throughout Las Vegas Valley. One of the women I admire most in Las Vegas, and many of my personal friends have urged me to support Mark in his application with great reason. My decision on who to support has come down to what I believe is best for Ward Six and the city of Las Vegas. When a developer asks me what I want in Ward Six, I tell them to go look at Sky Canyon. I ask them to mirror what he does for landscaping and architectural features. Although our vision for the Upper Las Vegas Wash is different from Sky Canyon, I know what Olympia has done in Ward Six without our partnership. The past two weeks, I've made several lists on all of the impressive things each company has offered to our great city. After going over the lists several times and a lot of research, thoughts, analysis, and discussions, and while I have a great deal of respect for Mark Fine and his team for the work they have completed in the past, I believe I am most confident that we can develop the next major master plan community for the city of Las Vegas with Olympia Companies. I am impressed with several points they've made, and this is very, very important to me. As mentioned, the Olympia team is currently in place with over 60 employees that are currently dedicated to building master plan communities in Las Vegas. They have demonstrated vast amounts of recent experience in developing mixed-use master plan communities along with managing HOAs and commercial developments. Their vertically-integrated team impresses me. It is important that there is a team that is already familiar and long-established relationships with my staff, stakeholders, and other governmental agencies. Olympia and their in-house technical professionals have close to seven years of experience understanding the drainage, traffic, and utilities in our area. Also, I believe their knowledge of the market for development in the northwest is an asset that we can partner on to build our vision on the 1,092 acres. As submitted in the Olympia RSOQ, all of key personnel and consultants, with the exception of from each, are local, and as you all know, I support and prioritize local businesses and families. During our individual meetings last week, I am encouraged to know that Olympia is committed to bringing on additional nationally experienced and recognized consultants, if needed, to address any specific matters for the development of our property, as our Madam Mayor asked. I am also grateful and respect the fact that a development partner is so focused on giving back to the community, and that it is part of their business plan in building a master plan community. Everyone knows I want quality development in the northwest. I love to well-scape landscape communities with a lot of room to play. Olympia is currently building Sky Canyon, and that is a quality community. I am amazed how this is becoming a community of choice for so many people in Las Vegas. This master plan community alone has made other builders up their game to compete in the northwest area. It is encouraging to know about all the great outdoor programs that are already being incorporated in Sky Canyon in conjunction with multiple organizations interested in education and protecting our sensitive areas in the northwest area of Las Vegas. I look forward to seeing how all of this is rolled into the program for the Upper Las Vegas Wash. I will be supporting Olympia as our partner in this endeavor. Madam Mayor, I move, we select Olympia and their presentation to negotiate with, as our partner, on the Upper Las Vegas Vision Plan on Item Number 55.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem, any comments? I think I certainly echo everything you've said here. We've had phenomenal presentations. I think the quandary for both was, even among staff, the superiority of both developers. And so with the motion, therefore, being made by Mayor Protem, I'm asking you all to vote, and please do so. And then please post. And that motion carries. And thank you, Mr. Fine, and thank you, everyone that has worked so hard on the presentation, and Mr. Perigo. Now, time, really, to earn your salary. Thank you, and congratulations, and thank you both for participating in this and all the support. We are very grateful. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to Agenda Item 56, Boards and Commissions Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Carlos Zulaaga and the Reappointments of Rocky McGee, Brian Poole, and Brent Wright to the Board of Appeals. Mr. Wright and Mr. McGee have served since 2012, and Mr. Poole since 2018. All three are eligible and wish to continue serving. Mr. Zulaaga is a nominee for consideration to replace Member Frank Wyatt, who is no longer wishing to serve. Action as outlined in the subject is supported by the Building and Safety Director, and that will be my motion. So please vote. And please post. That motion carries. And we'll move on to Agenda Item 57, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment and Nominee Steve Lauber to the Ward Six seats of the Traffic and Parking Commission and the Traffic Signal Capital Improvements Advisory Commission. Mr. Aguilar occupied the Ward Seat, Resident Seats on these boards and recently resigned. And a new member will need to be identified. Mr. Lauber is eligible and wishes to be reappointed, or to be appointed. May I have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to confirm Steve Lauber as a member of the Traffic and Parking Commission and the Traffic Signal Capital Improvements Advisory Commission.
Thank you. There's a motion to appoint Mr. Lauber. Please vote, and please post. The motion carries. And we will move on to, okay, we are at Number 58, Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption Later Meeting. Item Number 58, Bill Number Z2019-1, will be heard later meeting. There are no new bills, so the morning session city council is now in recess. We will hold on one second, please, before we maybe not be in recess.